It is six oh one. We are opening call to order.
Make sure you're mic'd for on.
All of our open session for roll call.
All right, Susan Brown out.
Yeah.
All right. Gretchen Ross.
Here.
Chris Kipsey.
Here.
Carrie Friend.
Here.
Everyone is present.
One point two approval of agenda.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Hold a second.
Any further discussion?
I'll say it all second.
Perfect. Any further discussion? Trusty Wright.
Hi.
Trusty Ross.
Hi.
Trusty Castillo.
Hi.
Trusty Friend and Trusty Brown out. Five. Motion passes five zero.
One point three public comment for closed session items. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment? Seeing none, we are going to close this.
And have a lovely.
You got any bottle of water in there? The water.
Check the bag. Do you think there's some in there?
You get dinner, but you don't get water.
I know.
That's true.
Yeah.
It's not a full service.
All right, we are reconvening open session. It is three point one pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Thank you so much, brother.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, three point two report on closed session agenda items.
Okay, the board discussed and voted on two point two personnel documentation, which was reclassification and additional hours. Carrie Friend made a motion to accept. Susan seconded and all voted in.
Thank you.
All right, correspondence four point one.
No correspondence.
No correspondence.
No correspondence.
Okay, four point two public comment. The board welcomes comments on matters of district interest. The board will listen, but cannot engage in discussion or take action on items not listed on the agenda listed below. Is there anybody that would like to make some public comment at this time? Seeing then, we will go on to five point one regular meeting minutes, September thirteenth, twenty point three.
So staff recommends approval of the September thirteen minute, September thirteenth minute. And we did have a couple grammatical adjustments that they will make. So prior to approving, but nothing substantial in content.
We'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September thirteenth with the grammatical errors corrected.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wright. Any further discussion? Trusty Ross.
Hi.
Trusty Castillo.
Hi.
Trusty Friend.
Hi.
Trusty Brown out.
Hi.
Trusty Wright.
Hi.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, six point one teacher presentation.
So we do have a very special guest, but before she comes up, and she does not realize that we have a slight surprise for her. So today we are honoring, and this is not because it's your birthday, although that's a pretty amazing thing as well. And tonight, we are starting our honoring of our positive behavior intervention characteristics, which include being safe, responsible, respectful, and kind. And we are honoring one staff member and one student after the entire team body, recommended by peer and or Liz and I. And so of that, we have one of our newest teachers, Ms. Megan DeVos. And Megan, if you could please come up. And these are some of the comments that we have to say about you. And not only are you a star, and that's not just because, oh, you can go right to the, yeah, I'll meet you over there. Not only are you a star, and that's not because she's a drama teacher. She is kind to everyone. She volunteers to help children. And she's talented and raises the bar for achievement. And really, our Falcons are so lucky to have you here and we appreciate you. So we are honoring you with a certificate of recognition, but then also a duckies gift card and our gratitude. So thank you very much. Our first one.
Wow. And Liz is gonna take our book.
And she's presenting tonight, so it worked out very nicely.
There we are.
So without further ado, Ms. Megan DeVos, our theater teacher.
Hi, it's so fun to be here. And now all of you know how we're supposed to be behaving in our ASB. Okay, so I'm here to talk about the electives that I am offering this year, namely drama. I'm gonna start with, we're opening our first season with sideways stories from Wayside School, which is based on a Lewis Sackar book that I fell in love with when I was in the fifth grade. And I'm really excited. Seattle Rep. three years ago did an adaptation for this stage, so now we're doing that as well. Um, it's, it's a little bit spooky. It's really, really funny. It's funnier than it is scary, but we've incorporated kind of a really big group of students to work on it with us. So it started off with Mr. Schofield's art class. And he did a six week elective called Stage, Set, and Design. And so what we did was we gave his students the script and we had a really brief production meeting with them. And I told them my ideas and I told them my definite needs, like we need to have a door and we need to have a window. And then they came up with the set. And they each designed their own sketches and we kind of went through and picked out what we liked from each one. And we made a combination of a kind of a collaborative set for us. And then they went ahead and built it. And then Ms. Leo's class did an electronic music elective. And so we gave them the prompts of all of our sound effects and musical needs that we would need for the show. So it would be as broad as like, we need a stormy night. And they were able to electronically come up with everything we needed for sound effects for our place. So it's been very inclusive.
That's cool.
My students are the drama teachers or students. So they are in the thick of it right now because they have a zillion lines to memorize. This isn't a musical that's filled with song and dance. This is a forty-five minute piece of full of dialogues. So we are getting to the point in the rehearsal process where their scripts are just being put down and they're able to use their full bodies to interact with one another. And this is where the real playing comes in. They can start making really specific choices. And they're funny and they're witty and they really, really impressed me. Today's rehearsal was amazing. So in elementary school for drama.
Is that performance?
Oh, yes, sorry. We have flyers for this. I'm gonna give them to you, Mary, and you can pass them. It opens on November second and runs through the floor and it's coming up quickly. I definitely feel the pressure, but I think, I think we got this. Okay, so we'll have it, I promise. In elementary school, the, we started the year off with pantomime. We had a lot of little Marcel Marceaux's running around campus. They got to do that, I'm stuck in a box or behind a wall. And they were picking flowers and playing tug of war with an imaginary rope. We moved on to mask design and movement within our masks. And now we're kind of focusing on really basic concepts of theater. So what is the stage? What areas of the stage am I allowed to walk in? What is upstage? What is downstage? What is the curtain for? What's the difference between an actor and a character? What makes a good audience? How can I be a good audience member? And my goal is to train them in the language of the theater and also the behavior and the respect that has to come with it so that when they do get up to fourth and fifth and sixth grades, when they are performing for me, I already have them trained as fine young actors. So then, what else? Okay, then I'm taking a total opposite turn. In my other life, I'm a metalsmith. I'm a classically trained jeweler. So in November, I started jewelry making class and it's going to be very introductory soldering. I'm hoping for about eight to ten students, they'll come in. We'll start with stacking rings. We'll be working with sterling silver and copper and bronze and brass. And then my goal is by the end of the six weeks to have us actually set bezel setting a stone. And then while we're doing all that with our little tiny creme brulee torches, we'll also be doing feeding and wire work. And so I'm really excited about that. It's my passion and it's what I love. And so I get to do that. And then in the spring, we just got the rights, and the kids don't know this yet, but we got the rights for Willy Wonka. So we're doing Homed Dolls musical version. And this class, the sixth grade especially, has so much talent. It's why I chose this show. Thad and all his male classmates have some strong, strong voices. So we're going to get to have a real Charlie and a real Grandpa Joe and a real Willy Wonka. Although I might cast a grown with Willie, I'm not sure yet. But so again, we'll do the same thing. So Eric will teach a set class. I will do a short little sound and lighting design elective. And Ms. Leo is going to co-teach this with me. And she will do all the vocal directions. So all focused primarily on the staging and the choreography for all of that. I'm really excited about it. I know that there's an ille lupa issue and it will be handled with grace and care. I'm just not quite sure how yet. And I think that's, oh, just because they're kind of considered slaves. Yeah, so there's people.
We look at it in a different way.
Yes, you can look at it at all different angles. But so that's, I think that's it. And then I just, I don't know who everyone is. So I just want to thank you. It's really amazing to be here. I'm having such a good time, like living my best life here. And I wanted to say a special thanks to anybody who's a member of the Rotary Club or the Lioness Club or the PTA or the Kaiakus Education Foundation because I am alike. We will make it even if we have to use cardboard and flashlights. And your generous donations are allowing us to do it with like some pretty cool tools, which is really great for these people. So thank you for all of that and thank you for my award.
Are there any questions?
Oh, yeah, please.
Yes. We didn't talk about her background, so we got really lucky. Megan came to our Jungle Book play last year and was so impressed with what was happening and just this love that she felt in the community and the kids on stage that she started talking with at the time, our temporary drama teacher. And lo and behold, she went to NYU, was a theater major, spent many, many years directing and acting, right, in New York, and has made her life here in Los Osos. And so this whole journey had happened as she was inspired by our kids in the play. And now here she is inspiring our kids and our communities.
Yeah, it's, I do have to add one more thing. So when I was in the fifth grade, I don't know how it happened, but my principal allowed me, I was really into Agatha Christie. She allowed me to do a production of Ten Little Indians, which for fifth grade is so inappropriate. But I did it. And so the, the fifth graders now came like out of the blue to me and said, we, we want to do Despicable Me, which is a film and it's a cartoon and it's big. Was, and, and I just looked at them and I saw like myself as a fifth grader and I said, you know what? Let's do it. And they are wowing me with what they're coming up with and helping me transcribe the film into a theatrical piece. So it's really cool. This opportunity is like bringing me full circle. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you, Megan. And Megan, are you gonna stay through the kiddos and then you're gonna take off, right? Because it is your birthday. And although you love our school. Before the kids get started on six point two associated student body, as I said, we have both students and staff that are recognized for the behavioral traits that we're celebrating, being safe, responsible, respectful, and kind. And we put it out to our entire staff, thirty-seven people, and got fifteen different nominations. Almost half of them came for the same student. And they didn't converse about it. In fact, Liz and I also picked this student. We had no conversation about it. And that student is here today to be honored with his, with his parents. And that student is, is Thad Riddau. And in fact, if you come out, please, let me introduce that. Dad, I want you to hear some of the things that people said about you and they appreciated about you. And then if you could introduce your parents, that would be great too, okay? So these are some of the comments people said about Thad. Knowing Thad makes me a better person. Thad comes to school each day with a smile and makes everyone stay better. Thad works hard in class. When he's unsure, he will stay after, ask a question and always say thank you when people spend time helping him. Thad, I want you to know that when Ms. Vee and I talk about these character traits, we are, you're the first person we think about. Yes. And so our, our best advice to you is don't change who you are. You are an amazing human being and we're so lucky to have you as a Falcon. So if we could give a round of, and we also got you a duckies gift card. And we're so proud of you. Congratulations. And this is for you. And here's your gift card.
Yeah.
One, two. And you could introduce me to your parents if you want, saying where did you come from?
Yeah, my parents are here with Mr. Tim and Christine Riddau. My mom, Christine, owns the store Moral Made. And it usually works now, although my parents work there. My dad here teaches business at Cal Poly too, to be the teacher. There's probably more to say, but that's kind of all I can think of for now.
Thank you so much, Thad. Okay, and now our associated student body report. We have Luca and Malia, who are going to present for the associated student body. And are you guys ready to come up? Great, thank you.
Can I come too?
Yeah, you absolutely. He is part of the body as well.
If the elections were held on September eighteenth, the student body elected pro-president Noah Foreman and Max Lee, Vice President Hazel Bombardet, Secretary Jennifer Harley-Lee, and Secretary Brooke Markway. Uh, the A S B. Yeah.
You're doing great.
Students in the A S B body were thinking, we're talking about maybe for like new merch ideas for the Lucas Falcons, we could maybe start doing mugs or stickers, not just clothing wear. And like stuff like that, maybe like other like package or something like that. And also maybe we could start doing more of the like, like the motto, like we could choose, if we could choose anything, choose, be kind. And not only just like the Falcon. We're also busy planning the fall dance in our course, and our course theme is Halloween. The dance will be held in the gym on October twentieth after dark, so especially. In addition to the dancing, there will be pizza and snacks, a photo booth, and a costume contest. All proceeds will benefit the A S B. Red ribbon week's theme this year is be kind to your mind and live drugs free. A S B is organizing a dress up day on Monday, the twenty-third. Students will wear red and line up on the blacktop in the shape of a red ribbon. A drone camera will shoot our picture from, from above to enter into the campaign school photo contest. On October twenty-fourth, all students will sign a behavior banner pledging to live drugs free. The banner will hang out in front of the school for a week. A S B will also host a lunchtime, lunchtime activities that include mindful stretching and racing for a healthy heart. A S B is currently organizing the buddy program. For older students in fifth grade, buddy up for younger students can do it for activities and mentor. We will kick off the buddy program in late October with races and optical sports teams.
So Dave, would you have any questions for our A S B representative?
I think it's pretty clear. There's a lot of information.
Just the comments, I like the merch so far.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I'll take a copy, Ken.
Great, well, thank you guys so much. And you all can be excuse, so you can go home and have fun or do homework or whatever you need to do. Thank you so much and bless you.
Bye, pissed off, honey.
Okay, and I believe that Ms. Thea Lutz will be presenting for the PTA that we were on last night.
So big happenings, we have a Halloween carnival coming up on October twenty-eighth. It's a Saturday from twelve to four. Right now, we're hunting down more pumpkins. So if you have any idea where to get some more little pumpkins to decorate for the kids on that day, let me know for fun. They need about a hundred and fifty pumpkins, so if you have any ideas for that. So the, each class will be in charge of a game on the playground. And there's lots of fun games that Katie Stahl Cuphead put together last year already. And so they're refurbished. There's a big, the game booth, of course, the prize booth, I'm sorry. Lots of really cool prizes. There are scooters, bicycles, skates, skateboard. It's all kinds of really nice prizes. And also food has changed. Food will be tacos, tri-tip and or chicken tacos, plus vegetarian bean and cheese burrito, plus the cotton candy, the alba frescos and the little cookies and cupcakes. And we can never forget the cake walker. The cake walker is on and it'll always be going. I think we should never get rid of the cake walker. But also don't forget that we have our big auction, which we held in the gym. So that will start at twelve and end at four. You can either bid and try to outbid each other on really cool prices. There are some really awesome things coming in. There's some state vacations. There's lots of wine. There's lots of really cool artists have donated some really cool items. And you can, there's, besides bidding against each other, you can also just outright buy it. So you know, if you don't want to go back and forth, which is kind of fun. But if you don't want to do that and you need to leave and you would really like an item, you can, there's, there's a set amount and you could just buy it outright and run with it. And off you go home to the next party. But it will be twelve to four on Saturday, October twenty-eighth. And we love all of you.
Um, Liz, I believe that Katie Madonna is doing something different about the online bidding for a couple items. What is that?
I don't know exactly. They're looking at a platform that you could actually bid online for items too. So I don't have enough information on that. They were trying to figure out how they were gonna get that going. But they were gonna do that. There's also this year, thank you for a little reminder, there's something called like a bucket raffle. So there'll be several, several items that there'll be a bucket in front of. And you will have tickets that you purchase. And if you, let's say that you like number one, you put a bunch of tickets in there. Oh, but I might like number three. And then at the end of the evening, they'll be picking out of the buckets in front of the different items. And if your name comes up, you win that prize. And that's strictly a raffle type thing. Anything else?
What's the date again?
The eleventh fourth.
Twenty eighth, seventh, eleventh fourth.
You need a big pumpkin?
Well, not that twenty seven hundred. Oh, we would love it. They could decorate. They have a really cool truck, an old truck for decoration for pictures. I bet they would love it.
Or you could go down the Missouri River and it'd go thirty-nine miles. That would be a world record.
And then they also, of course, we love our PTA because they are so supportive of all of the classrooms and all of our kids. Yesterday, okay, the kindergarten TK trip to Jack Creek Farms, where they have not only pumpkins, but they have all kinds of fruit, but they have activities for the kids in a cultural type setting. So thank you to them. That was about three hundred dollars. So we always applaud them. They, they never say no to us. They're a wonderful group.
The best apple cider tree.
Thank you, Liz.
All right, next up is the board member reports.
I think we have that health and safety.
Oh, sorry.
It's very quick. We did start both our safety committee and wellness committee required by educational code to have these two committees on campus. They both have held their first meeting. Becky Muslo, Marquez, sorry. Becky Marquez is the lead for wellness committee. And Ishmael Mora is our lead for safety committee. And those are on the master calendar if you ever want to attend. One of them pertains to looking at working conditions for employees. That would be the safety committee. And then the other one looks at overall wellness, not only for the food that our students eat, but also just staff wellness and looking at nutritional and healthy choices. So both of those are up and running.
They have a board member report, somebody might want. Went to the ethics dinner in Tuscany with Jen and Gretchen. That's going to be a requirement. Oh, sorry. Yes, two of them there, two of them. That's gonna be an annual required training. And I went to a women's luncheon with Jen. We were invited by a group that do modular.
Yeah, a retired superintendent who visits district and then also the modular company.
Yeah, and he'll be a C F agent, so that was the extent of mine. That's it.
Ethics and handling?
I think it's every two year. Or did it say every year?
I could be wrong. I thought, okay, maybe it is every two. Do you remember, Gretchen?
It's okay for that, by the way.
The count? So, yes. Yeah, it's part of the professional development budget. And it's going to be required in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for all elected officials. And it is something that city councilmen and other people have had as a requirement before, but now it's extended to school boards.
It'll scare everybody off. Oh, wouldn't that be surprising?
It's just, it, the hard part about it is it, you know, emphasizes all the things you can't do. And you go into service, a board member, like what can we do to help and how do we do this? And then it's all about, hey, don't do this, but don't do this. And this is a violation of that. And so it just tries to keep those rules situated and.
Oh, hefty fines.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, let's see, I had lunch with Jen a hundred weeks ago. I forgot my wallet, so Jen. But it was good just to talk. We don't always talk that much except for the meetings, so that was good. And that was it. I've had ethics trainings at companies I work for, so.
Like I said, nothing was surprising.
Yeah.
Oh, I was surprised. Really?
Well, I went to the ethics meeting and because of the proximity of my home, there are limitations on what I can vote on regarding the facilities here because I'm less than five hundred feet away from the school here. So an investment of mine that could benefit as to, you know, the, you know, what happens up here in the school. I, I can't vote on. So that was really interesting to know. And I totally get the reason for, for that. And I don't have a problem. I don't think we're gonna be doing anything major with the school that I need to have an opinion on, so.
But to shut down that lemonade stand after school.
Or expand it. If we decide to have a drive-through lemonade stand, you know, I don't get to vote on that. So it actually might be kind of good for my property values. But, um, and then I started the master to governance training. So I had my first class, which I think I've been really enjoying doing that this year. And I went to the safety meeting where we had fun with fire extinguishers. And, um, you know, it's been years since I be, I was, went through any fire extinguisher training, so I'm really glad to have had the, the brush up. And also there was some discussion about fire blanket technology, which I had never heard of before, about how. fire blanket technology, which I had never heard of before about how, um, you know, you take this special blanket and you throw it on fire and it gouses it without using the fire extinguisher. And so that was interesting.
Right.
Uh, after thirty years of teaching, um, I knew where the fire extinguisher was. But, um, we all hoped and prayed we never had to use it. So we didn't.
Well, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that these sprinklers work. That they stop here. You know, and I believe is all of, is are all of our facilities sprinkled or, okay, that's what I've gone. Everything is.
I mean, even the, um, portal, I would imagine so. I think it's a requirement. Yeah. I mean, I, yeah.
Yeah.
Bar chief has it all.
So, yeah, yeah, that did happen. And so. Hey.
I have nothing to report to this, this month.
Okay. Well, I went to the ethics meeting and I was shocked. Yeah, it just was pretty overwhelming, the amount of information that you can do wrong. So, um, and what else? I think we did the librarian at it before, but you're right about the new librarian. She just performed all this.
So, um, absolutely. And then we've been in, uh, oh, soon then, uh, Dave, uh, donated, she had picked up a, a, I know we were talking about ethics training.
Oh, that's right.
The constitutions for all the eighth grade.
Yes. And then I've got one for all of us.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you.
Okay, yes. We all got our little pocket constitution. So. And then that we swore to protect and defend.
Yeah.
I think that should be a requirement. Like, why aren't we not required to brush up on our constitutional?
Yeah, I mean, the requirement as a, a California state employee to pledge to the state, uh, and that's our constitution. But yeah, but not a quiz. So. Okay.
Seven point two superintendent's report.
So what we have, um, and you have it in front of you is the newsletter. Uh, really quickly, we have a guest with us today. Um, so you might have seen, I, I, I don't know if it's a familiar or unfamiliar. So Jenny's been in the, in the area quite some time. Uh, Jenny, uh, Dotary, Dotary?
Dordy.
Dordy, uh, is, uh, the employee from San Luis Obispo County off of the bed, who has been assigned to Cañucas to support our fiscal, uh, budgetary plan. So, um, she is just about a, a weekend to being assigned to. Yeah. Uh, sort of second visitor to Cañucas already, not because of bad things, but because she wants to be.
Awesome.
Yeah. Um, well connected and, and know, um, our school and, and everything that we do here. So thank you for coming tonight too. And, uh, in addition to that, uh, all of you know, you, you received some communication around our career week that we had between the last board meeting and this board meeting. Uh, they had themed dress up days. Tara Walker, our counselor, uh, did lessons within every grade level class that talked about career exploration, whether that would be a book read or an inventory on interest. And then we had eight community volunteers who then were in our gym and they had tables set up with their different areas of, um, profession. Uh, we had a realtor. Uh, we also had, um, a, uh, hairstylist, an architect, a, uh, a sheriff's deputy, uh, a local business owner, spooners. And actually he appears reporting his daughter today, a local automotive, uh, company as well. Uh, and then I mean, if anyone is, I went, oh, and our, like, our public librarian was here, um, from down the house. And so the kids were able to select the three areas of interest they had most and then went to those three different presentations, uh, they did. So that was lovely. Uh, we're in the, uh, process of sending all of them. Thank you notes from the PTA actually donated Falcon t-shirts for all of the speakers, which was great, uh, to PTA. And we are gearing into October, which is going so quickly, uh, which is pretty unbelievable. Uh, because we will be in November before you know it, which is a quite short month here in, um, Falcon Land. Um, as the kids talked about, we have lots of activities coming up. Some of those are also our parent teacher conferences. So on our professional development day that took place last Monday, um, they learned, our staff learned about, uh, some data that we do with our kids called the MAP data. And that's a measure of academic progress. So we give it three times a year. Um.
Is it just math?
It's not in English. Yeah.
Those are the short tests.
Uh, that's dibbles. Okay, I have a short one. Yes, that's for Jeff Litter's skill. So how are they with, um, counting out words, sight word development, those type of things for actual reading skills? These are more like, um, getting kids ready for state testing or any type of standardized testing. Uh, and it looks at, um, their ability to, uh, persevere through harder questions because it's adaptive to their skills. So it's supposed to get hard for kids. But that's how the state testing is also. And so we really looked at what we do with kids' data and how we goal set and how we, uh, plan our lessons around that. So there's multiple entry points for kids who are already excelling. Kids who might need a little bit of remediation or kids might need a lot of remediation. And how do you do that in a class, right, with multiple students? Uh, and the staff was wonderful about supporting that work and really, um, thinking about what they can do things differently and how they can serve our kids. It's great. Um, and then coming up is, uh, really looking at our parent teacher conferences. So that's going to be happening, um, the second weekend in November. Before we know it, they were actually scheduling today, um, where we get to sit down with our parents, go over data like that, say how their kiddos are doing in their class, things the teachers can partner with to help that, um, educational loop happen. And so that is some of the work that we've been doing. Just checking my notes really quickly to make sure. Um, I've been lucky enough to attend our rotary meetings as well as be in, um, our PTA meetings and in conversations, um, with C E F around our next steps related to our honor back of our staff and our community members. I did send a mockup, um, to not only to board members, but C E F. And then you should be getting a mockup back for the actual, um, not my, my graphic of it, but the actual, uh, frame. And then we'll set a date once we get that rolling on when we want to look at opening up those nominations for that process. So everything else is going great. And, uh, we look forward to the next few weeks of fall, which have been lovely, especially, um, after last week's heat wave, because it really was a heat wave. I laugh because you guys know I live in Paso and I think, oh, come on, you know, and my family, um, makes fun of me like it's that hot. But last week it really was that hot here in Cañucas. So lots of ice water for the kids. They loved it. Um, and shady. So that's what we really worked on. But I, I will give it back to the board for my side of it.
Right. Seven point three, LTAP update parent advisory.
Great. Uh, as you know, we have multiple meetings throughout the year for the LTAP, the Local Control Accountability Plan. We held our first meeting of the year with our team and it was wonderful to come back and have, um, almost every member back on our, our, uh, our group. We had a couple, um, we had a parent whose kiddo is no longer go here. So they weren't attending, but everyone else came back and we even had more, uh, participants. And we looked over our, our goals and, uh, really talked about our next steps in those areas that we told the community that we would emphasize based on the LTAP survey, um, that related to our, uh, positive behavior intervention supports, which you guys can hear and see as we interact and implement that here in Cañucas. And then also the transparency around student discipline. So we've done our first module in discipline, uh, training. And then our second one is coming up uh, at the end of October where we talk, dive into, uh, supports. And then lastly, the third module will talk about consequences. Um, and things that happen when we don't, uh, follow the positive behavior, the supports, and then there are consequences. And that was it. And we are still waiting. I have been going to the state training every Tuesday, LTAP Tuesday. If you ever want to bring me coffee on Tuesday. Um, and actually the last one was actually great. I don't know Jenny, if you attended it, but, um, they, uh, it's all webinar. It's all webinar based, but they actually, the thing I appreciated about it is they have the new template rolling out. It will go to the state board for approval in Jan, uh, December, and then hopefully be out to the school district in January. But, uh, people were very, really concerned and worried about the changes because everyone's talked about these massive changes. Um, and they had it redlined out. And for us, um, the changes are not great. So it will not be, I don't think, a massive undertaking. There is new, a new, what's called equity factor in the LTAP. Um, and in that equity factor, you have a certain percentage of students that are low socioeconomic, um, and, uh, are a minority group. Then there is a different calculation and different goals, measures, things that are going to be incorporated in that new template. Cañucas didn't qualify for that. And so our changes should not be, um, something that, that's, that's, that's very substantial. So that's where we're at with the LTAP update.
Right. Seven point four, state testing update.
So unfortunately, we are not able to share our state testing data yet. Uh, it looks to be released October fifteenth. I believe that's the date I have here. Um, and on that date, um, what we'll be able to do, and it will depend. So that's up until this Friday, I mean, Sunday, what is it, fifteen?
Uh, Sunday.
Sunday. So, um, it, the, since it has not been released yet, that means that it will start the embargo stage. So it means that this, uh, the employee, this superintendent and principal get released data for the school in the district. It cannot be shared publicly. Um, usually it's embargoed for five days. The reason they do that is because, um, very quickly when data is released, newspapers kind of jump on that data. It gives school districts time to process the data, see where they're at, be able to talk about it, understand it. So they don't get bombarded with, um, questions that, for example, the data isn't as positive as it needs to be. Um, so it should be about a five day embargo and then it will be a press release, discussion, those type of things. Um, I can tell you the lucky thing we have is that we're a very small district. Um, and so Liz and I and the teachers have looked at every single child, um, where they were last year, where they were this year, um, by child, by subject. Um, and yeah, yeah, I like to tell the, the teachers quiz me. I can tell where they were last year. I can tell where they're, where they're going, uh, which is always great. Uh, but that, that helps us indicate that, um, our scores should be, uh, just fine, if not, uh, quite celebratory. Um, so but you know, they have all the nuances of their equations that they do. So, but it's nothing, um, that I would be concerned with.
And did you say that the parents did get notified?
Parents got the all of their individual scores in August.
Oh, yeah, parents.
Absolutely. Yep. And then, um, then it will just be those trends that you see in the state and how do we fit in with those trends? And a lot of it will be emphasizing progress because last year was a restart year. So they made all of, all the grass purple and they said, okay, this is your baseline. Now, how did you do compared to last year? Um, and that's what, uh, the state data will be releasing. I think you'll still be concerned around mass scores across the state, especially in middle school, um, because that was a huge area, uh, under achievement in California. Not in Cañucas, but in California. So I will let you know as soon as we can.
Doesn't he study why?
They're their veterans.
They, I think, yeah, I, I do think that education is, is, uh, accurate in that math is a subject that's really hard to be self taught on. And there is a, um, just a typical, I think, in some cases it's a misnomer, in some cases it's true, of parents shying away from, I can't teach you math. I was never gonna math.
Well, they changed it too. It was new or was new. It's not new now, but.
Yeah. So it's one of those.
Problem and, yeah, for a lot of people.
It is. Yeah. And in math, it just hasn't been, um, you know, when there's always a, a, a fully right and a fully wrong answer. It's hard to jump on in and, uh, and, uh, explore it. It's a little bit intimidating at times. But there's university after university trying to study, you know, how do we fix the math issues? And particularly middle school, it used to be all about ninth grade. What they found then is like weird. They've been studying this for so many years. It actually started in seventh grade issue. So now that's really what they, their focus area is.
What was the old math called for? I don't even remember.
Just regular math?
I don't know. They just called it the name for it. Did anybody get it before on the board?
Yeah.
It wasn't traditional.
I, I just remembered the seventies new math.
Yeah. Actually came around because a lot of, a lot of common core is from new math. But there was a name for the kind of math that kids used to learn. Nobody remember?
I, I.
I don't remember.
Yeah. And we're not changing it again. So.
Oh, we are. To what?
I don't know, but they're in the process. That's a long.
Some new math.
Not so common.
Okay, that is it. All right. If we wanted approval of the consent agenda. Make a motion. We approve the consent agenda. All second.
Any further discussion? Trustee Castillo.
Hi.
Trustee Brent.
Hi.
Trustee Brownell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Trustee Ross.
Hi.
Motion passes by Chris Brown.
That brings us to nine action session, nine point one, review and acceptance donation.
As a, as Megan, our drama teacher indicated, um, you know, we have a very generous after with club community. You'll see here that the Cañucas Rotary Club donated, um, five hundred and fifty dollars to replace Mr. Spoffield's, um, demonstration camera. So basically, um, while he's painting and showing, uh, techniques within art, it's being projected up on the board behind him, much like you would see like, uh, Bob Ross teaching a lesson about the difference in hair for sure, for me to do. But, um, and so that camera was a little bit on the fritz. And so, um, with the help of Mr. Anderson, they researched a, a great camera and, um, Rotary supported the purchase of that, which is lovely. Um, and then we also, what, received a thousand dollars, um, from the Cañucas Rot- Rotary Club, which assisted in some of the replacement furniture we have in kindergarten in the, like, not the desk and chair part, but in the fun seating. Like the seating, yeah. Um, uh, little, little floor seating that have back supports, but actually quite comfortable. Um, and bean bags, things like that, uh, which has been great.
All right, nine point two. We accept the donations from the Cañucas Rotary Club of fifteen hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, sorry.
No, Rotary was.
Five hundred.
Oh, five.
We're both.
They're both.
Oh, they're both ready. Yes.
A little cheaper.
Any further discussion? Trustee Brent.
Hi.
Trustee Brownell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Trustee Ross.
Hi.
Trustee Castillo.
Hi.
Motion passes by Castillo.
All right, then three two, educator effectiveness.
So last fall, we brought this forward. So this is an automatic grant that the state gives to the school district, public school districts in California. Um, and then you are required to write a plan, uh, how to spend that money. Uh, we brought a plan forward last, I believe, September. The board approved that plan. Um, and then, uh, we did an update of the plan, which is now here. And then we had to report, uh, on the expenditures of the plan. So what, what the main thing you'll notice here is that as we worked through the surveying of teachers and what training and professional development they really were interested in. Um, we've got some great opinions and now are, um, almost fully scheduled out for that professional development. Some of those include, um, Get Your Teach On, which is, um, it sounds, it sounds fun. It is absolutely fun. Um, which is all about connectivity to students in the classroom and, um, breaking down the, I teach in front of the class, you listen at your desk, barriers that we know are hard for all kids to connect to and, and making learning involved in like, I can touch it, I can hear it, I can feel it and bringing in those senses. One of my favorite things that they emphasize around that is, um, when you have a really important unit, that is your whole classroom kind of like absorbed within that theme or unit. Um, it kind of makes you think of, have you ever had that teacher? I had one, uh, my high school where we were studying like class with American literature. And he came in one day like dressed, you know, and just set up. And you're like, it's something you remember for always, you know, it's that other sense that you bring in. So they will, um, we, we are, Liz and I are going on a three day weekend. So we miss no school. Um, our teacher kept volunteering to give away their weekend for it. Um, and we'll go with six teachers and Liz and I to get your teach on to really look at how we can incorporate that engagement and strategy and then bring back that presentation to the board. Uh, not in costume, but maybe in our fashion. So anyway, I think it'll be great. I really do. And, um, I had a couple of teachers as we presented it out. It's all grant funded. Um, one of them says they have been following this, this organization, um, for eight years on Instagram and it always led you to attend. And we were like, what? And Liz goes, what? She goes, I just, you know, I just don't know. It seemed like, I couldn't do that or not. And so um, and then going with the team is always great too, because it's bringing back that positive energy. We are also jumping into the idea of what's called thinking maps. Uh, thinking maps have been around a long time. Um, I remember being trained in thinking maps when I was a teacher um, years ago. And, uh, it really looks at graphic organizers and, uh, organization, um, as we take notes and as we prepare to write and integrating that through our elementary grade levels. So there's consistency and talk throughout. So it's not like, okay, I learned this in first grade. Now I'm in second grade and it's a whole new way to write. And so there's that consistency throughout also generated by teacher request. And so I think that's the power of almost everything that you see in this plan is from the teacher saying, we want to do this. We're reflecting on our teaching. Um, and we're asking for this type of development, which is great. Um, and we're asking for this type of development, which is great. So staff does recommend approval. It's roughly, uh, sixty-five thousand dollars. It's the state money in which we just report on the plan and the expenditures of that plan. Uh, no strings attached, so kind of great.
I'm making a motion to approve the, it's better effective than those.
All second.
Any further discussion? Trustee Brownout.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Bye.
Trustee Ross.
Hi.
Trustee Castillo.
Hi.
Trustee Friend.
Bye.
Motion passes by zero.
Right, nine point three, local assignment assignment option.
So we've been on the board for some time. This is something that, uh, typically comes to the board. It's kind of, I believe, almost every year, uh, for the past six or seven years now. Um, so being a small school, uh, we have to utilize our resources well, which means that, uh, unlike other districts where you might have two eighth-grade classes, and so you can have an English teacher teach one section of one group of eighth grade and another section of another. We have to get very creative with our master schedule. Um, although Liz and I have supported teachers in getting supplemental credentials, um, it's all work in progress. Um, and so there are two teachers and one of them is so close. So, um, she's a multiple subject credential teacher and she has already two of the three classes, or excuse me, tech passed to have the PE supplement. And she is taking that next one, uh, this fall. And so she's been working very, very hard on this, which is great. And so she'll have that PE supplement to then, uh, not be on this local assignment. So basically what the California Teaching Credential, um, Department or Agency does is it allows for you to have through a board action and a resolution approval, when you transparently tell the board and the public, we have these people, we're working through them. We have someone with that credential on our campus who can coach and support that person and make sure they're aligned to standards and the, and the California teaching profession, but this is the person we've assigned for that. So there are two areas. You'll see that both of them are in PE. Um, one of them is Ms. Peple and the other one's Mr. Schofield. So, um, as Mr. Schofield has dived into PE, we'll look at if that's something we want to continue in the future. Then we'll also look at that, um, ability to take those supplemental tests. The idea is you want highly qualified teachers. The reality is that sometimes in a little district, um, we have to also look at people's strengths and connect to the kids and, um, and, uh, assign accordingly, uh, with, uh, physical responsibility as well. So, uh, we are lucky that our principal, uh, is a veteran PE teacher. And so she will be supporting, uh, and overseeing their implementation PE and already did that on our PD day and looking at the standards and the units that they're planning and guiding them. So thank you for that, Liz. So the staff recommends approval of the local teaching assignments for twenty-three, twenty-fourth full year.
I move that we approve the local teaching assignments for the twenty-three, twenty-four year.
All second.
Any further discussion? Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Trustee Rock.
Hi.
Trustee Castillo.
Hi.
Trustee Friend.
Hi.
Trustee Brownout.
Bye.
Motion passes by zero.
Right, nine point four, career technical education incentive grant application.
So this is the reason your packet was really thick.
It's interesting.
Um, yeah, I will tell you, um, I, uh, do have a passion for career technical education because it's the application of learning. So although I am someone who went through the educational system and went to school to go to school, then to live in schools, um, so education is just my thing. I've also been very lucky to work, uh, with kids where school is great for them and they learn their basic skills, but they are really ready, uh, to go into a career. Or they are very, very bright kids who need the relevancy of understanding how, what their learning applies to a career. So for the past, uh, ten years, I've really lived in this realm of marrying college and career-going students. That is not just about applying to, you know, the greatest school. You have to have the, uh, career-based skills to be successful. And I see that, uh, time in and time out. Every single group of kids I see go off to university, um, who don't have those career-based life skills trouble in that transition. Um, so, um, I got to reflecting on all the things that we're doing here in Caillou's and thinking about how those are all these things that I wanted to do, uh, when we were in a very big, large K-12 system that we were able to do here, uh, things like career interest, interest stories. Uh, being able to look at, um, the career good day fairs, industry partners coming in, um, having guest speakers talk about that. I mean, we had our local weather person from KSBY in our science class was teaching about weather. It was tying to the industry aspect of it, uh, which has been wonderful. And so I jumped into the idea of this, uh, there's, there's hundreds of millions of dollars in career technical education and it's noted as TK-12. Um, I will tell you, uh, and I'm not, I'm not shy about, uh, it's okay with me, but, uh, there is no K-eight school that has been approved for a CTE grant on its own.
Never.
Um, so we've applied. At first they told us we couldn't apply because, because they said, well, you're a K-eight school. You don't have, you know, this or this. And I said, I have a CTE teacher. I have all the requirements. And, um, then they came back. I worked with my partner at the county office bed, um, Michael Speckliera. And, uh, they said, you know what? You actually can apply. So I said, okay, great. Let's do it. Um, so we spent some time. We did our, um, our needs assessment. Uh, we really tried to look at areas that we do well, areas that we need to grow. And it's now in the hands of the state, um, to see if we meet their standard. It is, it is not an incredibly large amount of money. It's sixty-five-ish thousand dollars. But it is, um, it's really about solidifying that we want to prepare our kids both for careers and college. And that's part of the work that we do here. Um, it's why we do mock interviews for every eighth grader, right? It's why every single one of them needs a resume. They need to be able to have an interview with someone before they leave middle school. Um, so we'll see what happens. We'll know in January. Um, I had a lot of fun actually writing it, which is, I know, a sickness. But, um, but anyway, it made me really happy about the things we've already accomplished and, um, that kind of set us apart from other places, um, which is great.
Well, I have the strengths and then the areas for improvement that would need to, need to read.
Yeah, on there. Absolutely. Um, they, it's a two-to-one match, meaning that we have to spend twice as much money as they, they'll give us. So we can put salaries of elected teachers, material supplies, all those things towards it, and then they do the other part of the money.
I was asking, some of those matches are.
Is, yeah, it's not a straight one-to-one match on the grid. It's the total amount that has to.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, exactly. But that's it. So I, um, so I, the reason we brought it to you is that if we get accepted of it, um, then the board, um, needs to be able to approve the plan. So because we've applied to it, I'd really like you guys to know we've applied and not accepted, you know, within that, but have it out there. So it's here and then we'll see in January, we'll report back if we received it or not.
How did you know about that?
I've, I've written this for other districts. So I've spent some time, yeah.
How would you know for other districts? Like, how do you, how does one?
Oh, you do get notifications from the state around what, uh, so I'm on a grant notification list. And so when I get those, I look at it and say, well, what are we eligible for? What can? Because it's the state money just sitting out there for grabs. And there was, um, this one, interesting enough, if that grant list came out and it said, like, there's still, you know, I had three hundred million dollars in CTE money left for grab. And I was like, hmm, I feel like we might be able to get that. Um, yeah, so we'll see.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
So this was really impressive working through.
Oh.
And then I was, yeah. Is this something that needs, is the motion on this or?
Yeah, it's an action item. Uh, just because if they accepted them, we won't have to bring it back to re-accept because we've accepted it. Um, but you know.
Wait, I want to hear if you got it.
Oh, of course.
Was it, was it when I was reading?
Oh, no, they'll be impressed.
I thought that you were going to talk this about, about a, a state word of education meeting. Can we zoom in and watch it?
Yeah.
And then we'll know.
I know, they, they, this list come out, they're daunting. You, you start, it could be of every district in California. So you start scrolling down by county and you're like, oh my gosh, did they accept it? Did they accept it? Um, and once, yeah, we'll see.
So are we making a motion to accept?
That would be great.
Get it?
The actual plan, yeah, an application.
Then I'll make that motion.
Thank you. All second. Any further discussion? Trustee Ross.
Hi.
Trustee Castillo.
Hi.
Trustee Friend.
Hi.
Trustee Brownout.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Definitely on.
Motion passes by zero.
Okay, and then is nine point five, progress report and plan on universal free kindergarten planning and implementation grant.
So, uh, prior to my coming to here, uh, Caillou's, um, Liz and Joanne, uh, Montgomery, our kindergarten teacher with the help of Amanda Fritchie, our TK teacher, who at the time was, um, a para educator, uh, wrote a plan, uh, with again, state money that came out that said, hey, if you write this plan, you can access the money because it is part of the funding of the expansion of transitional kindergarten, really what it comes down to.
Okay, I have another question.
Yes.
So where does the big money come from? Does it come from all of us, the taxpayers?
Yeah.
So like, when you've got this three million hanging out there?
Yeah, it's part of the state budget. So when, uh, Governor Newsom or whichever governor is in office, like in January, we'll do the governor's budget and they'll talk about the things that they're funding. These will actually be listed within those big pots of money that they're funding. So each, uh, governor will have kind of their project in education that they want to fund. Um, the CTE or career technical education actually came from the previous governor. Um, but this one, uh, the implementation of transitional kindergarten has really been Gavin Newsom's kind of lift, I would say, in education. Um, and it has changed, you know, the starting age of schools and all the things eligible within that. Um, so this was the seed money for districts to get ready, um, to start having four-year-olds on your confidence. Um, so, uh, Liz, Joanne and Amanda, am I forgetting anyone else?
We're just Scott.
And, yeah, um, basically wrote this plan together and have been implementing as we have, um, started, uh, transitional kindergarten, which is great. Um, you'll notice, uh, that here is just a, a report that says, hey, we're progressing on that, that she has to monitor from the state. There is another report later on this year that actually will give more meat to what Caillou's has done um, and the expenditures related to that. So this is just kind of the dipstick, kind of like where you're at. Hey, remember this is here. What are we doing? What do we need to do? Where are we, um, planning and utilizing those funds? And then there's a more extensive report later this year. So, um, I want to thank Liz and the team, Scott and Amanda and Joanne, um, for writing the grant and then Liz for maintaining it, um, and continuing it on. Thank you. Yeah, we had both of these do the same day, um, at, at like five o'clock.
Oh, geez.
So like, we were both mentally. I'm like, no, she's like, be quiet. Kind of like in the hallway, all happy. She's like, closing her mouth.
Whatever you think about it, it has some really great, um, it's a template. Also, there's also some really great discussion questions as we report, because next year we'll have kids that are two and a half months younger than what we have right now, so they're.
Oh, wow.
Ones that can't open the doors with them.
So it's our little ones. Can't reach anything yet. But I'm telling you, if you're ever having a bad day, that's supposed to go. No, yeah, well, your day will completely turn around. Those little faces. Can you wave at them? Oh, I can't. Oh, my gosh, it's, it's done. Yeah, it's good.
I'm making a motion to approve the progress report and plan on universal free kindergarten planning and implementation grant.
All technical.
Any further discussion? Trustee Friend.
Hi.
Trustee Brownout.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Trustee Ross.
Hi.
Trustee Castillo.
Hi.
Motion passes by zero.
The ten, like one, future agenda item request.
Okay, I do have two. If I could, if you don't mind, I can, um, ask, I'll talk to the board at first, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, um, the developer fee study. So we are talking with the company tomorrow, the consultant Jamie, that you guys met via Zoom, around the best process because we have the full five-year justification study. But we also still have the annual report requirement that has to be done, um, prior to, uh, December first. So it has to be posted for the public prior to December first. The board can, uh, analyze it on our December sixth meeting. So we're, we're meeting with her and her associates just around, should we bring the justification study in November? And then do the annual report, or is it better for them to come together and just get that information, um, as we move forward? The secondary part to that, um, which I asked for clarification on, is because those, there are those timelines, is that in January, the fees increase. So if we can't approve our fee increase for January in December, we would have to do that after the fact. And I'm not saying anyone's going to increase fees, but it's kind of closing that eye item. Because then, or I guess you could, but then we would then have to post fifteen days in advance. We would have just approved it, developer fee, and then basically three weeks later, which is all the holiday, we'd be coming back to increase it again. I don't think that is going to fare well. So I'm going to get that timeline. I'll email the entire board about what they have recommended and, and what our recommendation is on what comes to what meeting and when. Um, and then, um, when we do agenda setting with the board president, um, we can kind of get, get through those details. But I'll send all that information to you guys after speaking then tomorrow. So I'm thinking, uh, the justification study will be here in November as a future agenda item, unless we push that to the December meeting. But I'm thinking just that, uh, that, that's a possibility. Okay, the other thing is that, um, last year, we received a lot of, uh, information on, um, the National, uh, Roadshow, the Washington DC. So there's a lot of, um, frustration sometimes with school boards and being part of a school board member and all the things that are happening, right? And so, um, the small districts in, um, California, so I'm part of what's called SXDA, which is the Superintendent to Small District Association, um, ACTSA, which is all school district leaders in California, and CFBA, uh, recommend, um, the, the democratic process of lobbying for things that we want to happen in our local areas regarding, um, you know, federal initiative in education. So, um, there is the availability for that to happen with what's called the National Roadshow. I'm going to send the board members information on it. I think you might have received it already.
Post, post to the email.
Yeah, post to post. Um, but what I wanted to do is put that on the next agenda item for the board to discuss publicly around, is that something we would want, uh, represented in this area or not? I know we're little, uh, but, um, that's what I figured could be a good item for us to discuss. And then we can decide. And it, uh, it would need three days. It's in April, a board member or two, uh, or more going to that. The other part about that is that there's a lot of educational process around, um, you know, federal uh, workings of public education and the, um, exploration of that. So I'll bring it to the next agenda, if that's okay with everybody and we can talk about it. Other things that you'd like to see on the next agenda? We'll have a state testing data, which is great. Yeah.
Why, reflecting back that you and I, Carrie, were supposed to do something, some legislative course or something? Because I think you said I would and I was kind of interested, but I don't remember what that was. No. A little foggy brain. When, when we were all kind of taking on a little something extracurricular, then I took on the board policy.
Five o'clock, yeah.
And then there was another something that came up that you offered for the, at the legislating level.
I think it's talking about going to this next, this next year.
I don't. You don't remember?
I remember that somewhere, but I don't remember what it was.
Yeah, I don't either. So it's been running a few.
There's.
Look at our awesome minutes.
Yeah, there's another one, which is what, ledge day to, uh, that's legislative day in Sacramento. And we didn't go last year, but we had talked about because of the timeline. It was like right upon when we were going ledge day, I believe it happens in March or April of the year in Sacramento.
Okay.
Same thing where we look, then we're lobbying our local California lawmakers in regards to, um, our, of like, for example, the question that most people ask now is, is the local, you know, the L cap is local control accountability? Now, is it really local anymore? Or is it kind of determined for us, right? I think that's what you guys were just wondering about going to. The leg day, yeah. I went to leg day when L cap was first coming out. And then second one for that. I can find out about the date on that though, so we have. I don't know. We, we'll look at minutes or two. I think it was just the area of interest.
You brought the thing forward and you, we all said, oh, I will, or I will. No, you up and then.
Yeah, let's, we'll look at the December.
Okay.
Yeah. There were less. Yeah. Yeah. I think it was just the area of legislation being taken on and looked at.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah. Um, yeah, and then before you know it, December meeting will be here. So we have, uh, our quick, uh, November meeting and then we have the holiday and then the December sixth meeting, which is the reorganization meeting. And that is the earlier week, so December sixth.
Yeah. The reorganization president.
And.
And the other committee.
And.
Oh, okay, that's December sixth?
Yeah.
Okay.
We had, I think we decided that because things get so hectic around the holiday and people start to travel. And so it's trying to hit it a little bit. We had, I think we decided that because things get so hectic around the holidays and quickly start to travel, and so it's trying to hit it a little bit earlier.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
My calendar.
So November eighth and December sixth. And then we're into the new year. November eighth and December sixth. And thank you.
All right, well, we can adjourn, maybe. Seven forty.